Check some microphones. We haven't heard from Councillor Crossman. Can we check your microphone?
Good afternoon, Your Worship.
Perfect. Councillor Edget.
Good afternoon, Mayor Arnold.
Awesome. I think we've heard from everybody online. And I've got one o'clock, so I'd like to to whoever's turning on the YouTube. Oh, Councillor Legere, have we heard from you? Can we check your microphone?
Hi there.
Excellent. So are we rolling? Yes, okay. I'd like to call this committee of the whole to order. Have a note, Gaffia.
We have an agenda before us, Your Worship, to be approved.
Excellent. Is there someone who wishes to move today's agenda? Thank you, Councillor Kingston, seconded by Councillor Legere. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
So, adoption of minutes, Your Worship, are there any declarations of conflict of interest?
Any conflicts of interest? Anyone? No? I think we're probably good on today's.
New business, fees and charges presentation, Jacques Doucette, General Manager Finance Services, Greg Hauser, Controller Deputy Treasurer, Janice Robichaud, Manager of Billing and Collections.
Great. Thank you. Jacques.
All right, thank you. Your Worship, Members of Council, so today we're going to go through the fees and charges. This is, this will be brought back for ratification as part of the the budget process that will be deliberated in November. Janice Robichaud will go through the summary of changes today for council. In our package, we've included a summary of changes. We've also included all the fees and charges that we have in our city. And we've also, because we are recommending a $1 increase for the zoo as a capital levy, we've also provided some price comparisons and for the zoo and other similar activities that we can do in New Brunswick and other places, and also provided the zoo subsidy as well as that's kind of a pressure point. And it's the only area really that we've changed this year that we suggested to change. So I'll pass it over to Janice. She'll walk us through the items and then after that we can have a discussion. Thank you.
Okay, so I'll just mention too before, as you'll see like in the schedules, everything that's been highlighted in yellow is everything that's basically changed from previous year. So I'll just go through all the changes. So Kodiak Transport, basically, these are approved by the Governance Committee. For 2027, we're just continuing with the $1 increase. And then we're keeping single fare rides and the group individual day passes the same as those were the recommendations that came from last year. This would represent about 50K of additional revenue in 2027. So for the Moncton Coliseum, we're continuing with a 2% increase on the facility rentals year over year. This would represent about 16K of additional revenue and we added a few wording changes to the parking lot. Legends, we've basically proposed a 2% increase on the facility rental year over year. This would represent about 10K of additional revenue every year. Engineering, there used to be two separate rates for these snow dumps. There was a tandem and a trailer rate, so we're proposing just changing that just to be a one rate for boats, just to make it simpler. That's not going to do any additional revenue for this change. On the parking lot side, there's just kind of wording changes. So we've moved the on-street parking under the same line as the street meters, digital parking. And as well, we just added some wording for clarification because the hospital area, the meters are not the same hours as the other ones in the downtown area, so we just added the wording for that. Magnetic Hill Illusion, we are proposing a $3 increase in 2025 for per for the hail per vehicle and $5 increase for the tour bus. This would represent about 45K of additional revenue each year. The Moncton Market, we are proposing a rate increase of 5% in 2025, 2% in 2026 and 2% in 2027. We did some, a few wording changes. We removed the HST included because it's actually plus HST and we have removed the minimum 10 feet for outdoor vendors. Additional revenues would represent about 12K for 2025, 5K in 2026, it's 5K in 2027. And these would be to make the rates more competitive with the outer markets in the area. Resurgo, previously we had removed some of the categories just to keep all rentals on an hourly basis. And then for 20, for that's new this year, I guess we were proposing a $1 increase on the admission categories. Family passes and annual passes have a few different increases. I think family pass is $3 more and the annual pass is between $4 to $10 increase. And at the Thomas Williams House, we are proposing a $4 increase, 4% increase year over year. This, all these changes would represent about 8K of additional revenue. So moving on to the sports field. So this was approved last year. There was a rate increase for the turf field in 2026 and we were going to continue with an increase every two years. We had increased the tournament, tournament fees from $10 to $17. We had increased the light fee by $5 for 2024 as well as the hourly session by $1 and then seasonal rate we had updated by $25 and we were going to do an increase every two years. So for this year, what's new, we are proposing increasing the tournament fee additionally in 2026 from 17 to 20. And then the hourly session, we're continuing the same trend, just a dollar increase in 2027. And then we're proposing an increase to the user fee for the youths by $2 in 2027. All of these changes would represent about 11K of additional revenue. Then urban planning, we're continuing the same trend, 2.5% year over year. That represents about 7K of additional revenue. And then the zoo, as Jacques mentioned, last year we had approved a $1 increase on admissions in 2024 and we were going to do another increase in 2025. We had changed the toddler to start charging at three years and up and we had done a $2 increase on memberships. So this year we're proposing adding that capital levy of a $1 on all tickets and that would represent about 105K in revenue and that will go towards capital improvements. As well, to keep up with the cost, we would propose an increase of $1.15 in 2026 and $1 in 2027. So these would represent about 159K in 2026 and 105K in 2027. Then for the camps, they're all small changes. In the behind the scenes, they were proposing increasing the rate from 55 to 60 and the homeschool camp from 25 to 40. These were mostly due because they're increasing the length of time for the programs. And then we updated some of the age group that just matched what they were actually charging. And then I think high level, they're on the first page of the summary, it just kind of summarizes on dollar value, so.
Just tell them what sheet, it's 2025 fees and charges.
It's, uh, what sheet it's on.
It would be 2025 fees and charges by law if you, if you, if council opens up that document.
Okay. So. So on the 2025 fees and charges by law, the first sheet, so that kind of summarizes on the dollar value. So previously what had been approved on the changes that I noted was 247,248. The 2025, these are new revenues that we are proposing for 2025, that's 183,071. And that total new revenue, total revenue for 2025 would be 433,19. And then on the second page after, this just kind of summarizes for each year. So it's got 2025, 26 and 2027. So 2025, it's 183K and then 2026, 357 and 2027 would be 565,000. So I think that pretty much summarizes all the changes. I don't know if there's any questions or.
And I'll provide a summary. So thank you, Worship, Members of Council. And this year at a macro level, the strategy was really about, we're all, we've really considered, okay, with these user rates, we looked at every area and determined, okay, do we want to recover the fees from the users who use the facilities to try and keep up with inflation or so on? Or do we want to absorb it in kind of the tax rate and put the, put more pressure on the taxpayers that would ultimately maybe would use it or maybe would not use those. In most areas, we have updated simply based on inflation, so there's no major drastic changes. The, the, the only area that we've really made and is still within inflation, it's at the zoo, we've, we've discussed having a capital levy. We have a lot of asset management pressures at the zoo. It's difficult to find funding to be able to do capital projects because right now with the federal funds, provincial funds, it's mostly around housing, transportation and things like that. So what we are proposing is a dollar capital levy and then we could apply that to, apply that or leverage that for future capital projects at the zoo to ensure that we continue meeting our accreditation. So what we've provided just for justification as well, we have an appendix called Price Comparisons 2024 to Zoo Rates. So we've gone and we've done some research, if you open up that appendix, on similar types of, let's call it, activities that you could do in New Brunswick in the region. We've also compared to other zoos or so on to see if our price increase was really too expensive for our, for what we would charge. And based on what we've seen, the zoo is actually priced at a, quite a low rate in comparison to others. So, so we pulled all the categories just for council. So we still feel that with that capital levy, it's probably one of the best offerings you can still get for your price in the community and it will also assist. And then we've also provided, the last one for the zoo is, we really wanted to look at what is the zoo subsidy? So how much is the taxpayer paying to operate the zoo? And this is where you, as councillors, you have to ask yourself the question, do you want to put the burden on the taxpayers or on the individuals who would go to the zoo? And when we pulled our subsidy, we were in the, in the, from 2015 to 2017, we were under a million dollars per subsidy. Because of, because of inflation and things like that, we are now, in 2024, we are almost at $2 million of subsidy. So that mean, that simply means the taxpayer is absorbing a million more to operate the zoo versus the users who would go to the zoo. So that's why we feel the strategy of, because the taxpayers would be paying for that capital project. If we have a capital levy, it's going to be a useful tool for, for the zoo to be able to leverage more money and ensure that we, we have proper maintenance program for the exhibits and so on. So that, and in the summaries of change, sorry, in the fees and charges schedule as well, we have included all the details for all the different departments, if council has any questions. So we will open it up now for questions. Thank you everyone.
Thank you. Councillor Bourgeois, have you up first? Do you wish to move the recommendation?
Um, no.
Okay. Is there someone who wishes to move the recommendation? Thank you, Councillor LeBlanc. Is there a second for that? Anyone? Councillor Butler, thank you. Back to you, Councillor Bourgeois.
Good afternoon, Mayor through to councillors. Basically, it was really about cost recovery. The cost for the tournaments, cost for the lights, cost for all the services we provide. We provide with parks and public works, provide bathroom facilities with basically stalls and things like that. So it's really to bring that cost up for recovery of what we're actually incurring. Still doesn't cover the cost, but at least it helps to reduce some of that gap and costs of providing those services keeps going up both internally and from external services that we use.
Okay, then that begs a question. I think this is the, well, every year I think you, you've come before council requesting, recommending increases and why? This means that the $10 is obviously not enough, so why wait until today to, to increase that significantly, not last year or the year before? You know, a couple of dollars here, a couple of dollars there, or is it just last year that you've done the math and figured that it would, it would, it would need $17?
Just, just to be clear, I think it was last year we actually came to council and had the increase from 10 to 17. The additional increase for, for, when that will hold for a cup, for 25 and the 26 will go from 17 to 20. So we actually did, council come back, it was actually in 24's budget that we asked for the increase, but it wouldn't incur until 25.
And did we approve it then or is this just coming into effect now?
Yes, you did. You approved it, but we bring it back, so it's included in this year's budget.
Yeah, okay, okay, all right. Thank you. Also beg the second question, have we done the cost benefit analysis of every one of the fees that we charge to make sure that it is, don't want to borrow your words, but you know, it's, it's cost neutral or?
Thank you, Worship, to Councillor Bourgeois. We have not necessarily done that, although there are some areas where we do better. I think it's fair to say that in almost all of these fees and charges, we do not recover all, we do not recover close to the cost, but we, we figure it's, it's part of being a city, an active city as well, that you need these types of amenities, these types of services to operate a city. But no, we would not recover, I don't believe there would be many areas in our organization where we do recover all, all of the costs, so.
Okay.
Thank you. Also, Janice. Councillor Richard.
Merci, Madame Mame. Merci. Thanks for the presentation. I'm just going to, just a few questions off of the summary. So the Moncton Coliseum rental facility, we're adding 2% increase on facility rentals for 27. Is, so are we talking about the ice surface? Is this?
It's only on the room rentals.
Perfect. Okay, thank you. And then in the market, we're suggesting 5% 25, 2% 26, 2% 27. Just wondering why the 5% right off the bat, it's a total of 9%, why didn't we go just 3% a year?
Yeah, we just did a few comparison with a few of the markets around and we were significantly lower. So we just thought we'd do 5% to kind of bring it up to, just to bring it up gradually, so to where it should be.
Okay. Okay, I don't know. I'm just questioning that one because it could have been 3% per year instead of a jump of 5 right away, I guess. The rate increase for the turf, that's only, that's, we're saying that it's mainly for the Fisher Cats. What's the increase? I, I didn't go looking to the annex to see.
The summary. The increase was from last year, so it was going from 66 hourly to $73 per hour.
So I'm guessing that shows in the annex and it doesn't, just doesn't show in the, in the summary. Is that it?
Yes.
Perfect. Okay, merci beaucoup. Thank you.
Uh, thank you. Next up, Councillor Legere.
Yeah, thank you. I'm just kind of wondering, I guess first of all, what consultation has happened, for example, with the users of the sports fields when we are proposing these increases? Has there been any consultation?
I think we've had consultation. I know in the past we can confirm that. We have spoken with the departments and with those involved in those, with those fees, with those locations. And we can confirm back, but as far as I know, they've kept them in the loop as to those rates and the potential increase. But we can confirm back and actually ask that specific question.
I think that would be useful because depending, I guess, on their budgets, it could have a, an effect on, on how they're planning. The, the things that we're doing to increase extra cash, so for example, if we look at the capital levy and so on, is there going to be a report card on any of that stuff in terms of where the revenue is going? It's easy to say we're just going to raise, you know, we're going to add another dollar to the monthly pass, for example, for Kodiak Transport, but what are we doing with those dollars?
Yeah, so.
Nope, go ahead.
Also, thank you, Councillor Legere. I think the plan for that would be to take that levy. We would assign it to a reserve and then we would leverage it. So council does control the reserves and we would need council's permission to be able to, to leverage those funds.
Okay. It's interesting, I, I did visit the zoo and they, besides just their regular maintenance, they require a lot of infrastructure capital. And I don't think, you know, they're going to get there on this small levy that we're proposing here. And I think that we have to reflect on the services. You said it, Jacques, for example, that, you know, people come to our city and, and to either visit or to live here because of the amenities and the things that we have. And I think it was Councillor Bourgeois saying that, you know, there are subsidies, but at the end of the day, you know, that's, there's not an expectation that we don't provide these services. So for example, for the zoo, I think that's where we have to have that discussion that says, this year we're, we know we're going to have an assessment increase and for each dollar, or sorry, each cent that reflects the tax rate is a million dollars. And we need to start to think long term in terms of reinvesting in our infrastructure. And that's probably one way to do it until such time as municipal reform really comes in to play and, and we obtain more funds. So I think that's, because otherwise, my question would be, where are they going to get the money? I learned when I did the visit that at the zoo, their capital project that we approved, I think it was in 2019, still hasn't happened. They have a whole bunch of different things that have not happened. And in fact, some of the animals are no longer in the zoo because they've made conscious decisions of the better care of the animals. They, they've decided that there are certain animals that they won't breed anymore, they, and things like that. And I think we need to have a real understanding of the, of how important this asset, I'll just use that as an example, the zoo is, and we need to have the discussion on how are we going to support it long term? And it should be a similar discussion to our infrastructure. It is infrastructure. It's different though than roads and sewers and so on. So I just want to throw that out there. I, I think, you know, the, we need to also be mindful that, you know, costs have gone up. And the people who, who use the zoo and many people that I talk to, they do buy that pass and, and for some it may be relatively inexpensive, but for others it might be quite expensive. So I think we need to just reflect on that. For transport, I'm wondering about the dollar, although I guess if the decision's made, but I, my comment would be on the dollar for, I believe it's a dollar on the monthly pass. Would that be right?
Correct.
Yeah. So, you know, if we look at the ridership and we look at the people who are, are on our buses today, they're not making much above minimum wage. And so a dollar for them a month still has some impact. And I think we need to reflect a bit on that too. I think it's important though to, to have that discussion with the users. And, you know, I, for the ball fields and so on, I'd like to hear that they're okay as opposed to it's just again, City Hall increasing those costs quickly. So I would prefer different ways to fund things. I think we, but, you know, this is a user one, but sometimes it penalizes the people who, you know, use it because that's their entertainment and so on and impacts on all of us. So. Those are just my comments. I mean, appreciate the analysis and I think Jacques, you want to say something? So that's fine. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Councillor Legere. No, you, you've, you've hit a lot of, of, of good points on, on, on the head, right? That is exactly the exercise that we do administratively. It's really about balancing things such as affordability, so just providing things where users can go. And for items, for example, at the zoo, we, like the decision internally to do this is not an easy one. Sometimes it's also balancing, can the individual that goes to the zoo, can he afford $4? Can that family afford $4 or $8? Or can the individual at home afford that 2 or 3 cents tax rate increase as well, right? So that's kind of the balance that we try to do. It's not easy. And that's why these discussions could always be modified during the budget process because depending on the, the assessment we get or other factors, I mean fiscal reform would be huge. If we had fiscal reform, I mean, we'd be in a better, way better place to looking at our infrastructure to be able to keep the user rates really, really low. So it, it's, it's a big puzzle and I appreciate the comments because you, you are right on most of them. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Kingston.
Thank you, Madame Mades. Thank you, Jacques. I'm just, I was looking at the follow Councillor Legere's point about Kiwanis Park. Turf field, you mean Kiwanis Park, correct?
Yes, yes, it is.
Yeah, it's, it's the Moncton Mets, by the way. Sorry for the typo. Fisher Cats have been honorably retired. The Mets are back. Senior baseball, so that is the Mets as opposed to Fisher Cats. But the, what we previously approved, there's a number of categories there, Jacques and Greg. If they're lumped into one particular increase or there's a rate increase for the turf field, the lights that are increasing by 5, this year we previously approved that. The hourly session goes up by a dollar and then the seasonal rate in 26 by 25. Is that all lumped into one increase or separately? I'm a little confused on the categories of, of, of previously approved?
I think specifically on your question about Kiwanis, that would be a specific item for Kiwanis.
Right.
The turf field would be unique, turf fields of the other fields. And then the Class A, Class B, Class C fields, they're all unique. And I think on the lights, the lights per hour, I think is in places like Halvex and places like that.
Okay, I'm just looking for a bit of a breakdown there. So the hourly fee is up to 20 in 26. The hourly session goes up, user fee by youth as well. So good point, Jacques and councillors, because you know the. good point Jacques and councillors, because you know, the, uh, the end user, city of Moncton taxpayer, and, uh, these are increases that, uh, that that are, you know, yearly now with inflation and everything else, so it's important to, you know, to tread carefully, we're doing that now, and I appreciate the discussion uh, through Jacques and Greg and other councillors on on, uh, how we roll this out and exactly how it's it's perceived, particularly with the zoo to to the end user, so thank you for the discussion, merci Madame Matus.
Thank you, is there anyone who's not spoken on this item that wishes to ask a question? If not, I'll go back to you councillor Legere.
Yeah, thank you, thanks Jacques for the, um, you know, for for saying that, I think there's a couple of things, I would like to know if we're gonna move forward with the, um, the levy at the zoo, that there is a report card, so the people know that, you know what? If they're being charged, this is what they're, this is what is happening with their money. Um, the other thing though too is, I think as a, as a staff and and maybe you and the organization need to look at ways that you're going to present to council the things that we need to have long term, so you know, I I I often talk about, you know, that one cent, right? Well, if we need that to push our trail system forward, to to push active transportation forward, to to do things and to maintain the zoo and and do capital projects, then that has to come from you. It often is a is a discussion in and around, you know, well, you know, let's just, let's just have it. It doesn't mean that that we're we're going to necessarily approve it, but at least uh, it shows that over the long term, there's a, there's only a certain amount of money, and what you've presented to us is, okay, uh, even in our previous budget, um, uh, overview was the percentage that you need to run the corporation the way it's running today, but you know that your challenges, we all know challenges related to inflation and so on, and so I'm hoping that, you know, what, that's what we can see, so that we sit there and it's not us saying, you know, like, I understand there are pressures on individual homes and so on, I get that. But then we have a whole population that of different people in our community, and we have certain amenities that, you know, I I hate to see them decay because we don't have those conversations. So anyway, I encourage you to do that because I think it's really important, and, uh, it's the only way we're gonna move some things forward, and at the end of the day, if we don't use the the money, we can, we can give it back, we know we can do that. So it's not like we're, we're just proposing to to remove money and squirrel it away somewhere. It comes down to, if we're gonna do something, this is what we're gonna do, similar to what we've done, I think, with um, the the social, uh, budget that we put aside, the contingency. I mean, we, you certainly can can print out all the things we've spent money on, and I think that for the most part, they're, they were very great initiatives and needed, so. Anyway, I just throw that out and I thank you though, and, uh, uh, it is important though to find out what the Mets and those users, uh, on our fields, uh, that they get a heads up and that they understand this so that it doesn't go sideways, appreciate it.
Terrific, anyone else? On the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously, and thank you to Janice, Greg, and Jacques and your whole team for this.
Thank you.
Next item.
Financial statement update, Jacques Dusset, general manager, finance.
Thank you, your worship, members of councils. So we, uh, are preparing, uh, we're presenting today the August thirty-first, uh, financial statements for the general and utility fund. Uh, so we'll go through the different categories, and we've also attached, for information purposes, the purchasing acquisition report, and those are expenditures that have been approved under the the procurement policy thresholds, uh, by our CAO. So as of now for the general fund, we are, as of August thirty-first, we are one point five million dollars better than budget. Um, that is summarized by two point eight million dollars better than budget on revenues and one point three million worse than budget on expenses. If we break down the revenue section, um, in sustainable growth and development, we are seeing building permit revenues being five hundred eighty-three thousand better than budget. And we've also got some other fees, so that would be a ma- major category. One that we always like to point out is Kodiak transport, uh, which is two hundred and eighty-six thousand better than budget. Uh, so really good news there, as you can imagine, uh, our transit system is um, in good, in good situation, but it does have some pressures. Um, hold on a second, okay. Uh, and the other area that I would highlight as well is community services being nine hundred and forty-two thousand better than budget, but the offset uh, is seen in the expenses, so that is kind of a net, uh, position. And for interest rates, of course, we are doing better than budget mostly, uh, mostly due to the high interest rates uh, that we have seen, but we're also paying more on the fiscal portion. Uh, in terms of our expenses, we've provided the summary, uh, just a couple of areas to highlight for for operations, right now, we are a million dollars better than budget. Uh, that normally when we get good snow years, uh, we see that type of trending. Uh, in the other areas, again, we have some areas that are better than budget, others that are overall worse than budget. Um, but overall, I think for the end of the year, we'll be in a good position as we are projecting a one point seven million dollar surplus as of August, of course, that can change uh, anytime, if we get an early snow year or so on, those savings could go, uh, anywhere else. For the utility budget, next page, uh, that budget, uh, our financial position is healthy there as well. Uh, we're five hundred and fifty thousand better than budget on revenues. On expenses, we're three hundred and ten thousand, uh, better than budget, for an overall better than budget of eight hundred and sixty thousand. Uh, with some expenditures, there are some expenditures coming up from here to the year end, we're projecting a surplus around five hundred thousand for that budget. So that, those are the finals, uh, financial statements in our positions, and we've also attached a purchase purchasing acquisition report for June, July, and August, if council has any questions. And this is for information purposes only, thank you.
Thank you, uh, councillor Bourgeois.
Merci beaucoup Madame Lamarr, merci Jacques, j'ai juste une question, c'est par rapport à GEMTEC et le réservoir à Magalcan. Pourquoi on a été single source encore? Pourquoi qu'on a pas fait un appel d'offre? C'est mon temps, c'est important.
Pourrais-tu me spécifier dans quel mois juste?
Oui, euh, mois d'août.
Le mois d'août, okay, attends un second.
Purchase orders.
Do we, do we need a motion to start this?
No, we don't, this is just for information purposes only.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, so GEMTEC for the Magalcan reservoir, single source. Uh, I believe there, uh, I will get information for council, I believe it's because of the the equipment that is already there and that's the supplier, but I am not a hundred percent, so I will, I will provide an explanation to council, I can get that done by today.
Merci beaucoup, merci Madame Lamarr.
Thank you, councillor Richard.
Merci Madame Lamarr, merci Jacques, uh, just kind of la question que le conseil bourgeois demande. Can you, can you give me the difference again between sole source and single source? I'm I'm guessing I have an idea in my head, but.
Uh, I will, I will ask Tania to get the proper definition, I think I know what it is, but I would not go on record or put some money, so, uh, I will do that, so. And I can get that by the end of the day as well.
You make me feel good that I'm not the only one that doesn't know, um. And then also, um, for supply and delivery of five tractors, and I see Alexandre was here a while ago, I'm just wondering uh, where are these gonna be, uh, where are we gonna be using these, I see the fleet numbers that they're replacing, but I don't know what those units are.
What, what, uh, can you specify just a month, just so, uh?
Oh, I'm sorry, August, uh, yeah, the month of August, sorry, the first one.
All right, well, and I may be able to provide an explanation if Alexandre is no longer, uh, five.
Here, but this could be any department councillor, um, this three fleet, um, that manages this when they become end of life, and we would have to track back each number, and we will tell you, I'm not familiar by heart with each of them.
Yeah, it says mechanical department, so.
Yeah, that's because fleet manages this, so you would assign them to possibly parks, events, um, some other departments.
We'll get the information and 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 be able to send it to you councillor Richard.
Yeah, appreciate it, just to to see what we're replacing, if we're getting, uh, more trackless or anything else, whatever, you never know what's coming up, so, merci beaucoup.
Thank you, any other questions? Oh, councillor Legere, go ahead.
Yeah, thanks Jacques, just a question in the, I think this is the June report. And so, uh, so now that the operating, uh, funds and capital funds limits have changed, so the 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 Pennyac construction, uh, one, the refurbishment of the plane that's in front of Centennial, and that was almost four hundred thousand dollars, so the, is, does that mean that moving forward now, except for in these reports, council will not be deliberating, for example, on these types of refurbishments and so on? And is that, and and lastly, is that what has changed as to why we were discussing this a year ago, uh, as a, as an approval of a tender versus this one is approved because of, I believe, because the limit is now half a million dollars?
Thank you, worship, uh, to the council, I think there's a a couple of things to mention on this one. So the Pennyac construction, even under the old uh, limits before they were increased, uh, this was a capital item, so under five hundred thousand, uh, that would have been approved internally. But to answer your question around, uh, the deliberation, so what is really important there for us and what we're going to do for council is we are going to, uh, based on the new limits, because now it's five million, uh, especially for capital, is that, of course, we're going to, uh, during the budget process, uh, we're going to include, uh, more information in those descriptions, so that is going to be one area to deliberate. The other plan as well is that, um, at different times of the year, the service areas are going to come and provide at committee of the whole uh, some planned actions for the upcoming year and what they entail or so on. So even if council does not necessarily have to approve the awarding, uh, the plan is to update council on those initiatives regularly throughout the year, so that, uh, again, we're more proactive and we provide that information.
Okay, thanks, I I just have a side question, since it's in my mind now. Um, is there any way that we can be, uh, made aware of, uh, whether there's damage to our vehicles and so on, and the reason I bring that up is a recent post that indicates that over the last several months, there have been three accidents with our fire equipment and thousands of dollars, including some pictures showing front end damage, rear end damage, uh, to vehicles who collided apparently with our, with some of our fire trucks. And it would be nice to sort of know what the situation is so that it doesn't come as a, as a post, so I know there are a lot of moving parts, but, uh, particularly with emergency vehicles and so on, so. I just sort of put that out because it's, uh, it was posted recently and and, uh, in a way to to alert citizens and drivers of vehicles to be careful of our, of our emergency equipment, but on the flip side, we've had discussions in and around whether large pieces of equipment should be going out, for example, on medical calls and stuff like that, and we never, or at least I never see the the result of of accidents and so on, and so if I could just put that out there, Jacques, maybe would be good to have some type of analysis and and we see, you know, what, uh, what impacts this is having, uh, on our, on our equipment.
Yes, absolutely, thank you conseil Legere, uh, we will take that internally and we'll, uh, discuss on a process moving forward of what we can do, we'll look at different options with whether it's service Moncton or with fleet or with insurance or with, uh, with the legal team, and we'll come back, we'll come back to you for that.
Thank you, merci.
Councilleur Richard.
Merci Madame Lamarr, Jacques, what's so been called, Tania, uh, each, each of the reports, June, July, and August, at the very bottom, Tania must have knew I was gonna be asking the question, she supplied the, uh, single source and sole source definitions, so.
She is very smart, conseil Richard.
Oh, I know it.
Uh, I don't think I see anyone else, do I? Had to really see very clearly, no? Uh, speak now, no questions, all right, I think that concludes today's agenda, I would take a motion to adjourn councillor Richard.
I shall move.
Thank you.
Merci, may I go up to it?
Bye now.
Thank you.
Just have a question, the views of the progress, so it's. I double AF, but opposed last week, gotten the access, that's how we know, it's the accidents that the fire trucks have been getting into.